Okay, we will call the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five Born of County Commissioners Meeting to Order. Beth, will you please call roll?
Barry?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Bo?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
We have a quorum. We'll proceed if everybody please stand up for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, brings us to item C on the agenda, the consent agenda. What are the wishes or are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second at any discussion. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Chris, uh, Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item D is public comment. Uh, this is the spot on the agenda. If anybody has anything that is not currently on the agenda and they'd like to address the board with, now is the time. Looks good. Okay, we're gonna go to resolutions and proclamations. I see we have a proclamation in here and I'll get it opened. Uh, we've been asked to do a proclamation recognizing Operation Green Light for veterans. I'm gonna assume you guys all read that. Any discussion or what are the wishes?
I make a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing Operation Green Light for veterans as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second at any discussion. Roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, looks like we're up to you Dennis on bid openings.
Okay, we'll start with the graders. Eight graders were bid. Uh, we came in over budget. So I'll read the, uh, the greater bids. Tractor and equipment. Purchase price, four hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Uh, the trade-ins total. Uh, well, they're all two hundred and eighty thousand dollar each for trade-ins from TNE with a net purchase price of eight machines for one million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars. Guaranteed repurchase, two hundred and fifty, year three, sorry, year three, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, year four, two hundred and forty-five thousand, and year five, two hundred and fifteen thousand. RDO equipment. Purchase price, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Trade-ins. Two hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred, and two hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred, with a net purchase price of one million, seven hundred thousand. Guaranteed repurchase, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred, two hundred and fifty, year three, sorry, year four, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred, and year five, two hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars.
You said we're over budget by how much?
Double.
Perfect. So we budgeted nine fifty, is that?
Nine.
Nine somewhere.
Nine eighty.
Nine eighty, okay. Um, is there, I, I guess I have a couple of thoughts. Uh, does anybody else have thoughts on this before I go? Um, go ahead, Barry.
We're, it'll be the same.
Yeah, I guess my initial thought on it is that looking at the numbers, um, maybe we could split and do half the amount of graders, do four instead of eight, which gets us down in, in the, the range of what we have budgeted. And I guess my reasoning behind it, rather than rejecting and not doing them is, you know, we don't know where funding's gonna be going down the road. And I don't wanna get us in a spot where we're, we have eight old graders, um, and then if we, as we split these up, then we don't have to budget. Obviously, it's gonna be a big number. Prices are going up, but, uh, just the thought, uh, we, we used to do this, uh, when I was the A D, when we'd rotate football helmets. It was a little cheaper to rotate football helmets, but we didn't do them all in one year. So. Thoughts, questions?
RDO is here too, if you'd like to ask questions.
Yeah, I, I would agree with Cory. I think we need to, um, start rolling them. Individ- not individually, but halves or whatnot, and then down the road with the amount of pavement that we're doing, you know, two, three, four years down the road, we may not need eight. So this would be a good way to, head that direction.
We'd have that one old grader that, uh, could be the backup, that then nobody'd wanna break their own. Before we go any further, uh, Scott, do you guys have anything you wanna add? If you do, come on up, come on up. We gotta put you on the microphone. Just introduce yourself, who you're with for the record.
Morning, everyone. Scotty Emmons with RDO Equipment Company. Um, here to try to get the county's business because we've been trying for a long time and we know we make a product we can stand behind. Um, on the three and four-year buybacks, you're actually a heck of a lot money ahead compared to the TNE numbers. Uh, we ran a cost analysis. I didn't bring multiple copies. I'd given them to Dennis the other day. Oh, right in front of me. Right here. Here we go. So. I've got a couple copies of these. Um, three-year buyback, and this is for all eight machines. It shows a negative two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar. So actually, ahead of TNE quite a bit there, and then on the four-year buyback, we're still ahead at seventy-four thousand dollars net for all eight. So divide that by two if you were to get, you're still money ahead. Um, we do have a good lead time. We could get the machines to you by March. And, um, what else? Everything else is covered. For the spec, then we've got all the new equipment on there with capital I as well.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you have any other questions for me?
That was what'd be questioned, if they, if they were, um, prepared or set up for the snow.
Oh, yeah. They'll be a hundred percent per the spec that Dennis set, and then Dennis also spoke with the capital I rep, but a couple chose within the last month so that we got all the information and know how many wires crossed. Okay? All right, thank you.
So the good news is that muddies the water more. Uh, any, any questions, discussion? Uh, what are, what are the thoughts here?
I mean, if we end up with half deers and half cats, I mean, that everything changes over. I mean, all of our attachments fit? All that kinda stuff or not?
Correct. This, the way we bid this one, we, we got the capital I hardware to match up to our attachments for both parties, cat or John Deere.
Will the, will them walk and roll packers? Are they, are, is, are the mounts on them u- universal also?
Yes, they go in the stake pockets of the rear ripper.
Right, but I wasn't too sure if, you know, for some reason, somebody put their tooth a little farther apart than the other guy or, you know, that kinda.
They're all quick attached, so. Go ahead.
I mean, trade values are better on cats here, but, I mean, are you more concerned about the repurchase prices? Or what's your thoughts?
Well, history. That's a budgeting number. That's what we use, so I know what, well, I used to know what to budget for, or try to, within reason.
Right, but the, the repurchase prices, that, that's actually, you know, wrote in stone, right? That would be the one that.
So when we go to trade three, three deers and three years, they're worth two ninety-one, seven hundred. That's what you give us?
And does that matter whether we're trading a cat or a deer? That number stays the same?
Deer's only.
Okay, so, so we're probably looking at that four or five year if we're, if we're talking half already. I mean, we're not, we're probably not gonna trade.
Three and a half to four and a half, right in that time.
Right.
Hours. That's what our hours have been on the machine. Now, in, in two thousand and twenty-two, caterpillars, this is two thousand and twenty-two, the last time we bid them, they, their three-year repurchase was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Okay, that's their guaranteed buyback. Today, they are offering us two hundred and eighties, so it, you can twist these numbers any direction you'd like to twist. And which, that's what everybody does. I mean, it's like, how can you get the correct number? So.
How many hours are we out on these, do you know?
Um, the, the most is a little bit over three thousand, the least is like twenty-four, three, yeah, little over three thousand. The other one's like twenty-four. The smallest or lowest is twenty-four on, again, round, round numbers.
To me, when you look at the buyback and you look at the bid price on both, it's kind of a wash.
Well, I guess one of the things that we're gonna have to probably decide first of all is, what's the magic number? How, how many are we going to look at doing? And, and I think that could be two, four, six, or eight. I mean, that, it, it doesn't have to be four. I just said that number saying half. Um, if we feel as though we need to go lower, that's fine, or six. I mean, we're gonna be over budget. There's no question.
Right, but the, the, so the bid, you know, I mean, this is for one or more, so I mean, there's nothing that says we couldn't get three or five, or you know what I mean? It, it, it doesn't have to be, you know, half, so I don't know what.
And I guess as you said, Barry, maybe the, eight doesn't probably make sense anymore, only because at some point with the amount of pavement we're doing, we may be down, may be able to go down a grader at some point. And I don't know when, but.
Obviously, in the future, I mean, that is going to be, part now. That's one of the reasons for the paving, but then that just brings up a whole, you know, other problem, so, um, um, I guess that, yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, we, first, let's figure out how many we think we're comfortable with, I guess.
Four popped into my head because it does keep us under the budgeted number, and that was where I was at when I, and that doesn't matter which deer or cat, it's, it's under the budgeted numbers, so, and matter of fact, we would come out a little bit on the plus side. I think about a hundred thousand dollars somewhere in there that we would save on the budget, not really save, just not spend the budget. Well, I know tractors. Your operators going from cat to deer, is it gonna be a big difference? Are they controls the same?
Oh, I would say.
Power, they're the same?
The same. The hours, as far as warranty, is the same. That's how we bid it, so it's either John Deere or Caterpillar for warranty. It's full machine warranty for three thousand, up to five thousand or five years, whichever comes first, sorry. And as far as the operators, um, either way, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna, they'll be in the machine that you so choose.
Right, and I mean, the, the controls and stuff are industry standard, right, and they're, they're neck and neck the same machine, you know, for power and, you know, all that business. Um, I ain't too sure. They got, I'm, I'm assuming that they gotta be same weight class, same, it's, I mean, it's, it's as close as you're gonna get.
Yeah, they're all, they're all the same. I mean, as far as, that's why we bid it, so everybody is treated equal.
Did we get a champion bid?
Um, I don't know. Did we get that, man?
Yes, we did. Late, though.
Oh, it was late.
So let's do some figuring here. If, if we say we'll, we'll go with four, um, that would be what for amount, for doc, for the dollar amount? What if, let's do, just say we're gonna do four, what's the, what's the bottom line for both of these? I ain't got it.
Uh, eight hundred and fifty thousand or eight hundred and forty-six thousand. I mean, I, and that's a guess, but it's, I mean, we're, it's kinda the same number.
Right, but I was wanting.
Same number.
Yep, but I, but then if you, if you figure in the buyback off of that, that, that's the more of the number I was getting at.
Well, and, and yes, I, I agree. I, I don't think you can use the three-year if we're splitting them because we're not gonna be ready in three years to add four, so, but that, you know, the four-year, the four and the five-year are both really close, in my opinion, and, and I, I don't have an opinion either way. We've, we've run both and it's, they're both big graders. I mean.
I, I would agree. They're, uh, well, they're as good as you're gonna get. Um, but I guess I, I will, I would make a motion that we, we would purchase four of the eight seventy-twos. And we, we don't need to make a mo- with the, the trade part. That doesn't have to be involved with this motion, right? Anyway.
According, wouldn't you just say according to the bid?
Right, yes. It's exactly what I meant.
Karen, you got a squinty look. No, we're good. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second at any discussion? Discussion? Roll call.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. On the, uh, plow truck, uh, we have one bid from Wesley's Freightliner with the fall, excuse me, with the Falls Plow, three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. The Wesley's Freightliner with the hinky is three hundred and five thousand, eight eighty-five. And that's the only two bids we got. Uh, International sent us an email and they were unable to hit.
So.
Nelson International.
The, the, this is the same truck on both of them. The only, the only difference is the equipment.
Is the equipment, correct.
And, and we currently have falls, so we have a stacks or.
We have.
We have shelves of extra stuff for them.
Cylinders and shoes and things, yeah.
So then your recommendation would be?
Falls.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Are we just talking one? I mean, it says one or more on here, and I don't know what's budgeted in that, that line item.
I budgeted for one.
Okay, and does, and are we covered?
I budgeted for one and.
About this number. Did, did you budget that much for this?
Three hundred.
Okay, so we're right there, and we saved a little bit on the plows if we have to, so.
Yep.
Okay, just, just curious.
Yep.
Okay, what, uh, what are the wishes?
I would make a motion to go with, uh, Wesley Truck Center with, uh, a bid including the Falls equipment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, uh, any discussion? Discussion? Roll call.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate it. All right, uh, that brings us up planning and zoning.
Good morning. Michelle Haugen with County Planning. The first item we have today is LU dash zero zero six six dash two five, which is Ed Rintimaki on behalf of Richard Hubner, who is the trustee of the Richard Hubner Revocable Trust, Ronald Hubner, Roger Hubner, and Rose Berg. They're requesting a zone change to the Rural Residential Zoning District. The location of this property is the south half of the northwest, northeast, southwest, Government Lot Three, which is the northeast, northwest, Olive Section Four, Township One Fifty-four North, Range One Hundred West, um, being Stony Creek Township. We have not received comment back from the township on this project. However, I have spoken with, um, the supervisor chair of the township regarding this project several times, but they've just not rece- um, submitted formal comments. The applicant is requesting a zone change to the Rural Residential Zone, um, Zoning District for the subject property. The parent parcels consist of approximately a hundred and twenty-seven point five eight acres total and are currently within that agricultural zoning district. Purpose of the proposed zone change is for potential future subdivision development within the property. The southwest, northwest portion of this, um, contains part of that proposed route number three of the east bypass, be, east bypass route. Any building development would not be allowed within the buffer area of those routes until either, um, the expiration of that specific or a specific route is chosen. Um, and the others have been released. The agreement, the agreement is currently set to expire in December of two thousand and twenty-six. Access to the subject property is off of Fifty-Fourth Street Northwest. Um, when planning and zoning heard this item, they did recommend approval.
Okay, Ed, do you have anything to add?
Morning. Ed Rintimaki, Interstate Engineering. I'm representing, as was mentioned, Mr. Hubner on this rezone. Um, as Michelle mentioned, there isn't any immediate plans for subdividing or development of it. Part of the reasoning behind this too is he has developed or did a minor subdivision kinda in the lower right to the, the screen there, the yellow, which is Rural Residential, and then there's kind of a little, a smaller lot there that's only about five acres. And Stony Creek Township has kinda put the recommendation that they wouldn't like to see any lots smaller than ten acres. So with this rezoning, if and when that ever comes to be to subdivide, he would add that little five acre to some additional property to the west, which would make it a, a more buildable lot. There are some existing easements that kinda cover that five acres too that kinda limits the development of it. Um, there's also access then off of, I can't remember, what is that, Fifty-third? Fifty-third Lane to get into the south end, and of course, if there is any development in the future, you would have to go through the, your regulations, the subdivision process, design a road, access road through there. That would have to meet county standards, so. If there's any questions there.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Ed? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions for Michelle? What are the wishes?
Move to approve LU zero zero six six dash two five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Discussion. Roll call, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so the next one we have is LU dash zero zero eight four dash two five. Dennis Nearing is requesting a zone change to the Agricultural Zoning District for an approximately thirty-nine acre parcel. This is the northwest, northeast of Section Twenty-nine, Township One Fifty-four North, Range One O-three West, being Round Prairie Township, and they have recommended approval on this item. The applicant is requesting a zone change to the Agricultural Zoning District for the subject property. The property is currently a vacant parcel in the Rural Commercial Zoning District. In two thousand and twelve, Mr. Nearing was approved for a zone change to the Commercial Zoning District for this parcel for a potential sale of the property to be utilized for commercial-related businesses in the area. Since the rezone, the property has remained as a pasture, land, and used for agricultural-related purposes. Access to this subject property is off of Forty-Nine T Way Northwest. And when Planning and Zoning heard this item on October sixteenth, they did recommend approval eight to zero.
Okay, I don't see Dennis. Is there any questions? No questions? What are the wishes?
Make a motion to approve, uh, the zone change for LU dash zero zero eight four dash two five.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, Beth, it's you.
I have a repurchase for some property owned by Donna Golly. Um, her, she is deceased and her daughter is eligible to do this. Um, and also then, we have a deed that we'd like to approve too. I think we probably should do them all in separate motions. So I just need a motion to approve that.
To, we're approving what? The purchase, the repurchase and the deed?
Please.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes. I believe motion carried. Did we get everyone on that one?
I got a little confused.
That's all right. Next?
Next, I am asking for an appraised value recommendation to be approved for a property, um, Hyrum Sitting. Um, he has two parcels in, um, the city of Tioga, and it's Gilbertson Second Edition Lot Fourteen and Fifteen, and Gilbertson Second Edition Lots Nine, Ten, Eleven, and Twelve. We have the price that we'd like it set at, at seven thousand, four sixty-seven, fifty-three for the two thousand and twenty-four. For the, um, lots Nine, Ten, Eleven, and Twelve, oh, that's the total. Yes. And for the lots Fourteen and Fifteen, we have the price set at six thousand, one eighty-one, sixty-eight, and we need that approved, please.
Okay, what are the wishes?
Move to approve these appraised values.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item I have for you, if you had approved the repurchase for Albert Schroeder in the city of Grunora, and also approved the deed, the parcel is... Sorry about that. Lots 10 in the south half, lot 11, block 5 in Grunora OT.
Move to approve as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call please.
Bo?
Yes.
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried. Is that it for you, Beth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, looks like Lindsey sneaking up on us.
Members of the commission, as Lindsey comes forward to present her portfolio to you, I want the record to show that I am on the state committee, this grant committee, for the Rural Catalysts Grant. So should there come a vote from this board that concerns any of the fiduciary matters with grant monies on this Rural Catalysts Grant, I would recuse myself from such vote.
Okay, so, the Rural Catalysts Grant program has been released from the Department of Commerce, and this comes out of a Senate bill that was passed earlier this year in the legislative session. I mean, we talked about this during budget time, because one of the parameters that we knew at that point was that this program would require some sort of a match. And with the extension of the Williams County Sales Tax, having a certain portion of dollars allocated towards rural projects, this seemed perhaps like a fit of being able to start leveraging those dollars in our smaller communities. The core requirement of the Rural Catalysts Program is that only political subdivisions, tribes, or regional councils cannot buy, and it has to be from communities with 4,500 people or less. And half of the total two and a half million dollars that's allocated in this program has to go to communities with 1,500 people or less. So this would really leverage the majority, actually the majority of cities within Williams County, but not our largest one, Williston. So we would have to focus on the rural areas. Last week on Tuesday is when they came out with the actual details of the program and opened up the application process. And so what I'm bringing you today is a basic outline of some information about that program and then wanting to proceed with gathering the information from our smaller cities about projects that they may be working on to apply for this program and seeing how that could fit for a match. And then utilizing the finance committee is kind of that first gate for the appropriateness of the project, how much funding would be available, and then ultimately bringing it to the commission. The deadline for the program is January the 7th. And so while it seems far away, it's not, because allegedly it's November 4th. And so we would have to work a little quickly with the communities just to get that general idea, and then we'd need some time to work with them on that part. And that's where kind of the first opportunity with the finance committee is that November 20th date, so we can get it to you guys in December. The second page of the document that I provided you outlines in the words of the grant the different categories that projects can apply for under that hat of rural development, community development. And then based on that wording, a recommendation of how that lines up with the intent of our sales tax extension. And I kind of want to walk through this a little bit just to provide some context of meaning from the program. There was a webinar last week from the Department of Commerce just to kind of explain what these categories are, if that's okay.
That sounds great, but my question is, what is the match? Did I miss it?
It's, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. It's a one-to-one match. So there's two and a half million dollars available from this state. The maximum grant request from an entity is 500,000, and then it requires a one-to-one match from a non-state source. So this is also not saying that we would be 100% match, but to be able to contribute to what that is. But it does require a one-to-one, either in cash or in kind.
Gotcha, thank you.
Mm-hmm, sorry, I didn't miss that. And overall too, one of the things that they determined throughout the criteria for the grant program is childcare is not eligible for funding in general. So in the nuances of the categories, childcare is not part of that. The first category is slum and blight removal and/or remediation, and that is because some of the housing slum and blight removal programs that they had elsewhere were not renewed this time. So they put that into this category, into this program. And so that means removal of housing businesses for future redevelopment. The next one is community health and wellness projects, and they had a pretty broad brush on that. So whether it was a local clinic or hospital. And again, if there's an entity that has that type of project, they have to apply through a political subdivision, tribe, or regional council. A nonprofit or a private business can't apply directly. And then there's a category for expansion or new business project that addresses a critical need. This is also pretty open, but kind of more in that vein of a co-application with a private entity or a nonprofit. It also includes education. We would also potentially run into stipulations then with sales tax dollars in school districts. And that would definitely be something we'd have to work with Karen on. And then preserving or opening a rural grocery store. There's been a lot of talk about grocery stores. They did have a rural grocery store program earlier this year. It only had a certain amount of dollars in it, but this is an extension of that part. And so whether or not that would be open for interpretation of a community facility or within the spirit of the sales tax. Libraries for programming, capital, et cetera. And then place making, vibrancy, downtown improvement areas and projects, museums, recreation-related projects. So that would include park districts, things of that nature, and then transportation. So based on that, in the spirit of the sales tax, wanting just a clear guidance for those entities about things that the commission would be willing to consider or just not off the top of the bat so that they would know that that wouldn't be an option, kind of the intention there.
Can you bring any questions for Lindsey? Sounds to me like it's a great way to use our money to double it, if it's a possibility. So I, I mean, it sounds like a real good thing.
Yeah, this RCG committee also recognizes that two and a half million dollars across 53 counties is going to go quite quickly, so.
Okay, what, you're just looking for approval?
Yeah, for approval to proceed as presented or if you have any changes.
Okay, what are the wishes?
I'd move to proceed as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call please.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks.
Thank you, Lindsey, appreciate it. Good morning, Helen.
Good morning.
I didn't think it might, you were coming down whether I said your name or not, so I didn't even say it until you got here.
Yeah, I was on my way, unless somebody else wanted to preempt me. All right, we have a maintenance certification document that today needs to be signed by the auditor, the chairman, and the county highway superintendent. This is a document that we fill out once a year. It's about federal aid projects, and it requires that we certify that our federal aid projects are being inspected and maintained or in good condition. It's just a procedural document that we need everyone to sign. The state's attorney also signs off, and he's already done that, so Beth has that copy.
Okay, do we need a motion for those folks to sign?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, great, we have our staffing report, and I have some additions. So you see that we have an equipment operator, truck driver, and an adolescent care attendant on the list. We also got a resignation actually just this morning from a 911 dispatcher, or 911 telecommunicator is the official term. So I'd like to add that position to the list. And then we also have a resignation from our favorite county highway superintendent. He's retiring. And so May 8th will be Dennis's last day. Congratulations. May 8th. So this initiates for us a change that we've contemplated for some time. We knew that Dennis was nearer the end of his career than the beginning. And so we've been talking about how we might modernize the organizational structure as it relates to county highway oversight and then engineering oversight. So what I'm looking for then is your permission to initiate that plan that we've been inching toward. We've been changing how the budget is configured. We've been thinking about how duties will be divided, and now that moment is upon us in the next six months or so. So we will be advertising with your permission two positions. One is a county engineer, and the other is a county highway road superintendent, I think is how it's titled now usually. And so we'll add both of those. We have a little work to do on the job descriptions. We'll get those jobs posted. Dennis and I have had some conversations. We have a plan for doing some training, whether, we do have some internal candidates that could be suitable and do a good job, but we also know that these are jobs that folks in the region or in these fields would be interested in. And so we'll advertise it in the outside world and conduct some interviews and see where we go.
I guess, first of all, I would just like to thank Dennis for the amount of time and effort he's put in. It is very much appreciated. I don't know that people understand some of the things that Dennis had got to deal with. So, thank you, Dennis, we really appreciate it. Now that we split it, it's going to make it easier. Do you want to apply for one of them? I think you'd maybe be a front runner, so. Anybody else have anything there before we move?
I would just like to say thanks for everything you've done. Job well done.
Just when I ran for county commission, I remember specifically saying that, you know, one of my issues was fixing the roads. And I wanted to tell you, Dennis, that since I've been on the commission, it's not that easy. So, I mean, I remember Barry was on the other side of the panel, and I remember he was like, oh, well, that sounds easy. So I knew I was in for a little education. Yeah, I know. Now you know. Next time you run, Barry, it's that easy, just fix them. So between money and people and time and expenses and equipment and stuff, it's not that easy. So thank you, you've got a lot of work invested.
Dennis, also, thank you for fielding the difficult phone calls. And when touring the county building with Helen, meeting you, your passion for what you do is pretty obvious. Thank you for giving so much of yourself to that project.
Yep, and just get rid of the phone number, and don't advertise your phone number anywhere, because our favorite people that love to call won't be able to find you then. Congratulations, Dennis.
Okay, enough of the mushy stuff, let's move on.
Right, so I need your permission to fill positions. It is the two we have listed, plus a dispatcher, and then the two positions that are created by Dennis's retirement, a county engineer and a county highway road superintendent.
I would move to fill those positions as presented from Helen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bo? Any discussion? Roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, just a quick update, and I'll actually provide a more detailed update at the next meeting. But just in passing, we did complete the purchase of the fairgrounds last Wednesday. And so the $300,000 that we paid for that property has been transferred. We were out, county highway crew was out last week, did some repairs to the hard surface areas. There were some holes and cracks that we did a little bit of work on. And our crew was out with the Fair Association guys to get the water lines blown out. So we're continuing to be involved, we're starting to do our bits and pieces. We are working through the details of leases with all of the parties that will be using the property. We're sort of prioritizing the folks that are using the property over the winter. I am in the process of going to board meetings for all or most of the eight organizations, clubs that use the site. I'm hopeful that at the next meeting, we'll have drafts of these agreements for you all to look at and review. The process is Karen and I are to the best of our ability getting them put together. We're sharing them with the groups, taking any feedback that they might have. We'll need you all to approve them, authorize the chairman to sign, and then we'll get them out for final execution. So working on that hopefully for the next meeting. I'll try and get those out ahead of time with some notes. There's a lot of legal, there's eight to 10 pages with a lot of legal language, but I think I'll be able to point out the couple of sections that are actually different in each of them. So carrying on, I think it's a new and exciting time for our community as we start to make some improvements at the fairground and then think about the future.
And as Bo brought up, it's probably like roads, it should be easy.
For sure. Yep.
Good luck, keep up, keep up the good work with that. Okay, is that it from you, Helen? All right, we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiating strategy and/or provide negotiating instructions and for attorney consultation regarding the purchase of property near the fairgrounds. The legal authority to hold an executive session is North Dakota Century Code, Section 44-04-19.1, subsection 2, 5, and 9. The North Dakota Century Code, Section 44-04-19.2. The board will return to open meeting after the executive session. Could you repeat all that when you make the motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to move into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, we will now go into executive session. Okay, motion carried. We will now go into executive session.
We will reconvene the commission meeting at nine forty-three. Is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call please.
Bo.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Corey.
Yes. Motion carried. No further business. We are adjourned.
At nine forty-four?